Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Escondido City Council. Please rise with us for a moment of reflection and remain standing for the flag. Salute.
Yeah, please join me in a moment of reflection. We come together tonight to say thank you. Thank you for the privilege, the blessing, the honor it is to serve here in the city of Escondido. We come together tonight as a diverse community, a community of backgrounds, different beliefs, different presence and different futures. Yet one common goal, that is a betterment of the city. We come together tonight to seek guidance, wisdom and discernment during deliberations that transpire this evening. And in doing so, we lift up Councilmember Joe Garcia, Councilmember Fitzgerald, Councilmember Christian Garcia, Deputy Mayor Martinez and Mayor White. May they be granted peace and wisdom as they lead our city into a bright and prosperous future. Amen.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll call this meeting to order. It doesn't count, I don't have a cap. And we'll do a quick roll call. Councilmember Fitzgerald?
Present.
Councilwoman Christian Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Joe Garcia?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Martinez?
Present.
And I, Mayor White, am here. Do we have a report out of closed session?
We do. Thank you, Mayor. The City Council heard four matters in closed session this evening. All council members were present. One matter is appropriate for a public report at this time. In the matter of Julio Lopez versus City of Escondido, a workers' compensation appeals board case identified in the agenda, the Council approved by a vote of five to zero. The settlement of the action for a total amount of one hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and forty-two and fifty cents. Nothing further than a public report at this time.
Awesome. Thank you. We'll now move on. Do we have any non-agenda public comments?
Yes, we do. That will be James Kellogg.
And for anybody who has not been to a City Council meeting, public comments are limited to three minutes. Do we have any kind of a warning to let them know?
Yeah, there's a...
Perfect.
Yeah, we're right up there. You can go ahead and talk.
Thank you. It's my first time ever doing this, and I know I have less many supporters, but thank you. Because I only have three minutes. I am coming to ask guidance. There's been a lot of talk about the fires over in L.A. and everybody's going to go to help them. I had a fire in my industrial building back in June, and it burnt completely to the ground. There was nothing left. People from L.A. have been calling me, asking me guidance and what to do. The problem I'm having is I'm getting no, not relief, but just understanding. Even like a simple thing as a back check file, it has to be reported. And I try to explain, there's no building, there's no water, there's nothing there. There's concrete walls that's standing, and that's it. It got to be to the point where they were gonna find me, and I had to get this done. It was five, six hundred dollars. I just asked them to wait until I get things rebuilt. So I'm coming to the point now where I'm finally gonna submit plans. It's been six months, and that's gonna start next week. I'm just asking guidance and if I could email or talk to somebody about getting my plans through as fast as they do up in L.A., because they're just shoving these things up there quickly. I'm building it, it's called Life in Kind. It's an industrial building, five thousand four hundred square feet. I lost everything I had, so I have to start over, a different life. That's what legalship in L.A. is. It's a different life. It was a morning. I lost personal plus my business. And so I submit the plans next month, or next week. I'm worried that it's gonna be months and months before I get the okay. And it's hard to survive as we're waiting for the approval. If there's anything that can be done to just expedite it. I have a good standing, I've always paid all my fees and everything. I don't mind paying all this stuff. It's just the waiting time is crucial for me. So I don't know if I could send emails to whomever, or what do I do? I'm just coming asking for guidance.
Did you leave your contact information on the card?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make sure my phone number and email's on there.
I will reach out to you tomorrow, and then we'll get staff to follow up with you as well.
Awesome. Thank you. I have thirty-three seconds left. Thank you. Thank you for supporting me, everybody.
Our next is Lisa Richards. Lisa Richards. All right. Rhiannon Guley. Rhiannon Guley.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eusef Miller, and I would like to start off by saying Happy Black History Month. In Escondido, we have a, we also have a black history issue. Sometimes it's not pretty. Back in the days, Escondido was considered a sundowntown. African-Americans couldn't come out after sunset. And all the quote-unquote flat lands of San Diego County drove African-Americans to Julian and Palomar Mountain for relief from that kind of activity. That's not what I'm here to talk about today. That was the, my initial speech, the Happy Black History Month, and that, that we should all look into it. And I am available to give black history lectures at schools and groups and things like that anytime anybody wants, Eusef Miller. But what I came here to say is last month was Anti-Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And here in Escondido, we had our first ever anti-human trafficking rally and march in honor of anti-human trafficking awareness. Thank you Deputy Mayor Martinez for being there, supporting us, representing the city. And a lot of us gathered in that rotunda back there. We had tables from the missing and murdered indigenous women and people. We had Alabaster Jar Project there. We had groups from San Diego and all over coming to support us. And Serpentumis Together Against Trafficking, which is a sorority that has been doing this for years and having a march in Vista. I want to let everyone know that we'll be doing this annually. That was the first annual for Escondido. We will do it annually. And what we did is after we talked and educated people on human trafficking, we marched around up the, up the street to Washington. We came back around to Escondido Boulevard, went up Broadway, Washington, down Escondido Boulevard and back here in front. And then we had a nice little, you know, traffic support, everybody honking their horns, big signs, honk if you support anti-human trafficking. And everybody was beeping their horns, and it was a great time of camaraderie, understanding, learning and support in fighting against human trafficking. At that event, which was led by myself, I'm the founder of Masques Against Trafficking. A mosque is a Muslim worship site. Masques Against Trafficking, since 2016. I've been fighting that in Escondido County. And we announced that the seventy-eight corridor to be closed to human trafficking. Why did I say that? Because here in Escondido, where we have support from Alabaster Jar Project and everywhere else, and also I live here, and Masques Against Trafficking, we also have in Vista, One Safe Place, in San Marcos, Well, San Marcos, One Safe Place, in Vista, Serpentumis Together. In Oceanside, we have the NAACP that has an anti-human trafficking chair. So there we announced that we consider this closed, and we want to educate all those cities to make sure that people understand how to report human trafficking to declare closed. And we would like the support of the city to help us make that declaration. Thank you.
Okay. That brings us to the consent calendar. Items one through eleven are on consent. Do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
No.
You have a motion? I'll second it.
And Mayor White, we do have one member of the public wish to speak on item number seven.
Okay.
And that is the extension of the contract to sixty-eight. Would you like them to come forward, object to vote for a second?
Oh, I think you can come now, and then we'll hold the vote.
Okay, great. Stevensko?
Mayor, Council, good evening, my friends. My name is Stevensko. Aside from my business career, I have spent a lifetime in the arts. Orchestra conductor, high school music director, booking agent and a fair pianist. I say this only as a credential for what I'm about to say. Three hundred years ago, an entrepreneurial musician got a gig to write a piece of music that later became known as the Water Music. He hired musicians and acquired a barge to float down the Thames while playing this now famous music. This was part of an afternoon on the river with King George and his entourage. The king loved it, and George Friedrich Handel was invited to court. The king became Handel's patron. The arts have always required patronage to survive, and always will. It can never totally support itself. It doesn't work like a pop star selling millions of records. The arts can raise us above our primitive selves, and as evidence of a worthy culture, did the city really build that magnificent place without understanding this basic concept of patronage support? And conversely, over the years, the city has not held the center board and management to their obligation. Their stated mission, of course, is to entertain and inspire. Their implied obligation is to promote a positive view of the city of Escondido and our community, maybe even be its most visible cheerleader. Council's past have allowed them to fail in this obligation. You are their patron, just as the king was Handel's. Hold them to that responsibility and give them the money to do it. There just might be a win-win in that equation. Lori Filer once said to me, "It's not really that much. In fact, it's cheap and well worth the investment if they succeed at their obligation to be of benefit to their patron." Under the right leadership, it might even come close to being profitable, like a business. It has done that before. But it's unreasonable to not expect the art center to always need patronage, as it was three hundred years ago.
I have a motion and second. Any other discussion or questions from Council? If not, please open the voting.
Voting is open. Motion approved by zero.
All right. That takes us to our public hearings. And for anybody who's here for item thirteen, the 2024 Omnibus Zoning Code update, that item has been continued to a future date, so it's no longer on tonight's agenda. With that, I'll open the public hearing. First, for Interfaith Community Services, Conditional Use Permit Modification.
Good afternoon, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Councilmember. My name is Alex Rangel, Assistant Planner for City of Escondido's Planning Division, and I'm here to present to you item number twelve on your agenda, which is a request to modify an existing conditional use permit for social services located at 550 West Washington Avenue, which is currently operated by Interfaith Community Services. Staff would first like to remove the request for Condition E5 regarding the change in hours to the Quin Street Gate as part of this action. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council adopt Resolution 2025-11, approving the project with no change to the existing Condition E5. This request was originally included as part of the applicant's efforts to develop a public right-of-way mitigation plan. As this plan is still currently in development, staff has not fully analyzed any potential issues or concerns and is rescinding the condition adjustment at this time. Tonight's recommendation, recommended action aligns with the city's identified essential services in keeping our city clean for public health and safety, as well as land use development, and also aligns with City Council's identified priorities of improving public safety. The subject site is addressed as 550 West Washington Avenue. It's founded by Quin Street to the west and Washington Avenue to the south, located in the central region of the city under general plan land use designation of light industrial, under the light industrial zoning, which permits for lighter industrial and office-type uses, more restrictive than that of our general industrial set. Surrounding property uses include the Escondido World Market or Swap Meet to the west across Requiem Street, fleet storage and other warehouse uses across, oh, I'm sorry, to the south of West Washington Avenue, a hotel used to the east and a multifamily residential used to the north. I'd now like to introduce you to our applicant, Interfaith Community Services. For brevity, staff will refer to the operator as Interfaith or the applicant interchangeably. Interfaith has been located at the subject site for over twenty years, serving as the primary headquarters for their San Diego County area. Interfaith's initial use permit allowed for social service uses, which permitted administrative services, food storage and distribution, and its head bed shelter for veterans. Over the next nineteen years, Interfaith's operations have expanded through multiple conditional use permit modifications to encompass the entire facility identified in your slide and in your staff report. On January fifteenth, 2025, this body reviewed a city-initiated conditional use permit modification, which entailed a complete retooling of the previously approved conditions of approval. This effort was made to consolidate and clarify the existing conditions associated with the existing social service uses, resulting in minor changes to the existing operations that seek to abate public nuisance concerns. This was a collaborative effort between city staff, which included Development Services, the Police Department and the City Attorney's Office and Interfaith's leadership. This project became the governing document for the land use as it is today. Tonight, Interfaith has submitted for a conditional use permit modification to modify their existing residential uses as part of Interfaith's collaborative efforts with the San Diego County Health and Human Services, providing withdrawal management services currently under the ten-bed veterans and withdrawal management flex space. In July of 2024, Interfaith was awarded an expansion of this contract, oh, sorry, lost my phrase, was awarded an expansion of this contract to provide additional withdrawal management beds. This contract is scheduled to go into effect on February twenty-fourth, 2024, to coincide with potential city approvals. The slide before you breaks down their existing and proposed residential uses on site. Interfaith's residential components break down to the following. Interfaith currently operates forty-four transitional housing beds and proposes no change to this use. The forty-nine emergency shelter beds will be eliminated and converted into forty-nine withdrawal management beds. Ten beds operate as flex spaces, which can operate between withdrawal management and veteran shelter beds as necessary, to provide a total potential of fifty-nine withdrawal management beds across the facility. The sum total of all residential beds will remain unchanged, providing a total of one hundred and three beds on site. This expansion will operate in the area identified in the eastern portion of the building, the upper portion of this map as you see here, which includes a dormitory space, intake and staff offices, medication, bathrooms and storage. Clients of the withdrawal management services would have access to additional maintenance and services within the facility, such as dining, kitchen and laundry. Treatment beds for this facility are billed on a first-come, first-served basis. Interfaith does not operate or maintain waitlists for clients, but is able to provide resources to other programs if they are unable to provide care on site. Clients are provided assistance through substance use disorder counselors, licensed physicians and medical staff to ensure appropriate treatment is provided to said clients. The typical length of stay for the withdrawal management services requested is ten to fourteen days, based on the determinations of medical staff on site. Full description of the associated policies that Interfaith follows for this use are included in your staff reports under chapter five. As part of this project's review, the Staff Development Committee reviewed this project against the city's general plan, zoning code and other development standards. The project is consistent with multiple components of the city's general plan, to include the city's housing element and the community health and services element, providing a range of housing opportunities and healthcare to target populations. The project was additionally found to be in conformance with all applicable zoning code standards. The Police Department participated and collaborated heavily with the city-initiated modification approved on January fifteenth of this year, and has independently reviewed the proposed changes under this modification. The Police Department's concerns have been addressed in the matter of both projects, and they are satisfied that all city services have been addressed, and this requires no further review. This project was also part of the city's discussions with the applicant and the homelessness subcommittee. As part of the city-initiated proceedings surrounding this conditional use permit, the homelessness subcommittee, comprised of two city council members, have directed staff to return the applicant-initiated modification to City Council for final decision. On January twenty-eighth, 2025, the Planning Commission held a duly-nosed public hearing for the applicant's request to modify their CUP. The Planning Commission discussed numerous aspects of the use, including the recently approved city-initiated modification, the public safety concerns which led to said modifications, Interfaith's current utilization of the site and the project's scope. As part of this discussion, the Planning Commission wished to informally recommend the City Council the option of flexibility within the forty-nine-bed component, to allow Interfaith to provide other social service residential uses beyond that of withdrawal management, such as those previously approved for this location. Ultimately, Planning Commission voted six-one to adopt Resolution 2025-03R, recommending approval of the project with minor modifications related to consistency issues within the approval documents. The proposed project qualifies under the California Environmental Quality App Exemption Guidelines, Section 15301 for existing facilities. And should the project be approved, city staff will file a notice of exemption for the project. Based on the information provided in your staff report and associated attachments, as well as the information provided in tonight's presentation, staff recommends the City Council approve the applicant-led conditional use permit modification to eliminate the existing emergency bed shelter services and convert those beds to additional withdrawal management. Staff requests that City Council adopt Resolution 2025-11 with no change addition to Condition E5. And this concludes staff's presentation. Additionally, the applicant has requested ten or fifteen minutes to revise their own presentations as well, but staff is available for questioning.
Why don't we hold off on questions for staff and have the applicant give the presentation there? And then we'll move on to public comments, and then we'll open up for discussion.
Do it again. It's a pleasure to be back with you tonight, one month after your unanimous approval of the modification of our conditional use permit. Please to be able to share a little bit about our proposal this evening. It was just a month ago that I was here and we were discussing the overall operations of our 550 West Washington site. I want to thank you again for your approval of the permit to operate those services and highlight that last year, we helped more than one thousand individuals overcome homelessness through those services, prevented homelessness for nearly fifteen hundred individuals. And just give a brief update, since the adoption of the updated conditional use permit, we've been successfully implementing those operational changes. One of the requests from Council was that we outreach to local businesses, and we sent letters to the owners and operators, went a step farther. Our teams canvassed and connected directly with all of our local businesses and made really strong connections there, received positive feedback and have developed new ways to work together to help our local neighbors get off the streets, access our services and move forward with their lives. I'm here tonight to share about our proposal to address one of the most pressing and challenging needs facing our community. Unfortunately, more people die in Escondido from opioid and methamphetamine overdoses than any other city in North County. Our zip code's nine-two-zero-two-seven led that category sadly, for fentanyl overdoses and nine-two-zero-two-five for methamphetamine. It's a tragedy that I know all of you understand and are committed to addressing. The policy adopted by this council on homelessness draws a clear line that this city is committed to addressing and providing pathways out of addiction and out of homelessness for our residents. We wanted to share some of the points that we really see strong alignment with our proposal tonight. The commitment to support and help individuals who are interested in reaching sobriety, specifically to provide immediate access to those individuals who are willing to accept help. As a provider who offers these services, we know that the reality today is that help is usually not immediately available. Just today, we had to actually turn away a young man who was seeking detox because our detox program is currently full. But we are profoundly grateful and excited to bring forward this proposal in partnership with the city to provide an opportunity to turn this policy into reality and provide that immediate access to help and support for those seeking to overcome addiction challenges. A brief overview of what we're seeking to do. Let's start with what we are doing today. Interfaith has operated our current withdrawal management program at our 550 West Washington location for more than five years. Previous iterations of these services have been provided by Interfaith in partnership with the city going all the way back to the 1990s. But we're gonna focus on our robust, comprehensive withdrawal management treatment program. So how do people get into this program? This is not a fly-by-night, drop-in, sober-up-for-a-couple-hours-and-see-you-later program. This is a wraparound, intensive engagement to provide somebody with a pathway towards sobriety and recovery. Individuals only access the program by connecting with our Interfaith homeless outreach teams, who work here in the community every day, or they schedule an appointment and then complete an in-depth intake and assessment. That includes a screening for medical stability to ensure that they're well enough to enter the program. Once they come into the program, they're part of a fourteen-day intensive engagement where they're receiving twenty-four-seven support, they have access to healthcare, they have access to a substance use disorder counselor, and they also have access to a mental health clinician specifically to help them. Discharge planning and access to the longer-term residential treatment programs that we offer and connect people to begins right away, and that's the outcome that we seek and most commonly reach at the end of the fourteen days. Last year, this program served more than two hundred individuals, seventy percent of whom came directly off the streets of Escondido. Seventy percent also successfully completed the program and moved into longer-term treatment. I've shared with each of you in our individual briefings that in just a three-month period, our outreach team successfully got forty-five individuals off the streets and into our treatment programs. It's a phenomenal number. And some of you very wisely said, "Okay, what's the status of those forty-five? How are they doing today?" And I want to share with you that today, forty-three of those forty-five individuals have either successfully completed treatment or are still engaged in treatment. Only two individuals have been unsuccessful in this intervention. There's been focus in the past on emergency calls to service out of our 550 West Washington location, so I want to highlight for you that this program had only eleven calls to emergency service in all of 2024. Ten of those were from medical conditions, one was a mental health issue. So all of that is fantastic, right? This program is working really, really well. Problem is, it's full. The problem is, as I mentioned, even today, we had to turn away a young man who was seeking and needed detox services. So we are, again, honored and very thankful to have worked in partnership with staff, with police, with many of you here in leadership today over this past year to bring forward an additional resource to get more people off of our streets and into treatment. Interfaith has secured a $12 million grant from the county of San Diego to expand our withdrawal management services beds. We're seeking to do that by converting currently unused beds, our former emergency shelter beds, which have not operated due to lack of funding. We're able to provide the services I described at these beds, and we are seeking your support to modify our conditional use permit to support that use. We also have a federally funded homeless outreach team focused entirely here in Escondido, and that provides a preference for Escondido residents to access those beds. There is a challenge, though. There's a time-sensitive issue that we're facing. The grant from the county to support these services has to be begun. It has to operate within two weeks, which coincides with six months of when the program, when we signed the contract and the funding began. The county issued requests for proposals this last fall. They have other providers in place who are ready to provide these services. We risk losing this funding and losing the ability to provide these services if we're not able to get them up and running. And most importantly, again, unfortunately, we leave the community in deaths among opioid and methamphetamine overdoses. And we have individuals who we are working with in partnership with the city of Escondido who want to get off the streets, but we don't have a place for them today. So we're seeking your support to provide those places for them to go tomorrow and in the weeks ahead. The technical change that we're seeking is very, very straightforward. It's to convert the emergency shelter beds to withdrawal management beds. There's no change to the total number of permitted beds on site. We are excited about the possibility to do this work. Our teams are ready. We have hired additional staff to be able to operate these programs immediately. We are outreach and connecting with individuals who are ready to access these additional beds from Escondido immediately. We have an opportunity to deploy resources that tap, well, not tap or require a single cent from the city of Escondido, but will leverage the work of Interfaith Community Services and investments from others to... and investments from others to provide these services to individuals from Escondido. We are here to request your support for this critical life-changing service. We are pleased to also have been supported by planning commission, by staff, partnership with the cops unit, and with our partners in law enforcement. Joined by a whole, wow, look at all the other best supporters. They're here because they know the need for this service. You're here serving in leadership because you know the need for this service. I think this is a fantastic example of Interfaith and the city working in partnership, a policy being drafted of Interfaith identifying a way to put that policy into action, securing resources from outside the city to address some of the most pressing issues facing the city. This is an opportunity to help people change their lives, to save lives, and to improve the entire community. We're backed by a lot of letters of support. Appreciate the support of everyone who's here tonight, and I'll be here for any questions after the fact. Thank you for your consideration and most of all, your partnership.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close with public hearing, and we will hop into public comments.
Yeah, we have 10 speakers on the side. First is Sarah Fisher.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here to speak in opposition to item 11. I have a number of concerns and I wrote a letter. Hopefully, you'll all see it. My main concern is that according to the Regional Task Force on Homelessness, Escondido already has the highest per capita population of homelessness people in North County, second only to Orson Side Second. And we have beds opening up shortly in San Marcos and Vista that have the opportunity to take on some of these lives. My fear is that by bringing in, and I applaud everything they're doing to try to help homeless patients as well as mentally ill patients, as well as people that are addicted to drugs and alcohol. My fear is, though, that this potentially opens the door to bring patients in from other parts of the county. It's been said that the threshold for counting somebody as an Escondido resident is 24 to 48 hours. 24 to 48 hours. So you could come from any other part of the county, be here for 24 or 48 hours, and be a candidate to be treated in Escondido and further elevate our homeless population. My second fear is we passed some legislation back in November that gave 1% sales tax to help support our police and fire. We know that they're already underfunded, understaffed. We want to build our city and grow and have a more robust community, a better tax base. And by increasing the homeless population, we run the risk of shooting ourselves in the foot. So I'd like to suggest, well, and Mayor, you came and spoke to the Turk meeting, and you said that initially with that 1% tax increase, for the first year, we would be paying down debt, and it would take time after that to accrue money to begin to build up our police and fire. So I'm very concerned that we don't have the resources to address what we need to address. And that puts undue burden on police, the fire department, residents, and taxpayers alike. I'd very much like to help these folks, but I think they need to spread out and use some of the other resources available in the county that are coming on board very soon.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lawrence Campbell.
Mayor, council members. I've been an Escondido resident since 1989. It's the first council meeting I've come to speak on any topic. I've had a lot of attention, haven't felt the need. I'm worried about this one. And so I should make clear I'm speaking in opposition of it. It's two issues. One, all these emergency shelter beds are now being eliminated. And so it's been unclear, and I haven't heard anything yet tonight, as to where those people are going. Are those beds all full? Are they already empty? I don't know, but where will those people go to be served? The second issue is, one I think was just alluded to already, and that is when the people come in and go through that program, one, where are they coming from? Are they coming from Escondido? Or are they being sent up to us by the county from all over San Diego? Is this going to become a regional arm of the San Diego County? They're the ones who are funding it. And that would be a concern, particularly because when people leave the program, where are they going? There was some discussion on the chart about going back to their origin. But I haven't heard or seen anything that tells us when they graduate, where are they going? So is this going to simply become an attractant to us? In five years, we're going to look around and say, my God, look at what's happened here. Those are the two biggest issues I've seen. And I thank you for your attention and look forward to your thoughtful consideration of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Jill Campbell. Jenny Harkle Road.
Good evening, Mayor White, council members, community members. My name is Jenny Harkle Road. I grew up here in Escondido. I raised my four kids here in Escondido along with my husband. And I own a wellness company here in Escondido called Balanced You, where we help people get on track. We help them think right and change their life, make positive changes. And I've learned one thing with support, people can really make changes in their life. And so I'm here to support Interfaith tonight because I think they're making a huge impact, a big difference. From a business perspective, thriving community of Escondido is a place where we all feel safe, where we can take our families to parks where businesses can thrive and our economy can really flourish and grow. From a human perspective, I know that substance use doesn't just affect one person. It affects families and communities. And when people don't have access to treatment, they usually stay stuck in the same place, in the same loop, and we're looking for solutions for them. When they do have access, and of course, commitment to a rigorous program like something that Interfaith offers, change isn't just possible, it's highly likely. Interfaith's proposed modification is compassionate. It's fully funded, and it initiates medical care, beds, shelter, and support for moving forward in jobs and really having a new path, a new start, a fresh start. I understand the hesitation with who's going to be filling the beds, and I'm confident that with Interfaith's outreach team here on the grounds, just like Greg mentioned today, a young man was turned away. They can say yes instead of no and give those people who are here in town ready for a chance that hand up. With $14 million already in secured funding, this program is designed to prioritize the city, to make the city safe, to address homelessness, and to address substance use. This proposed modification is smart, it's compassionate, and it's going to make a difference in Escondido's future, a positive difference. This decision will change lives and affect our economy in a good way, and it'll create a healthier city for us all. I urge you tonight to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is May Batista.
Good evening, Mayor White, council members and fellow Escondido residents. My name is May Batista, and I'm the owner of Daydream here, a boutique shop in the heart of downtown Escondido. I love this city, its small businesses, and its community. I want to begin with gratitude. To each of you on the council, thank you for your leadership. To the Escondido Police Department, thank you for your support every time I've called in for assistance. And to Councilmember Garcia, thank you for coming to our Downtown Business Association meeting to introduce the dedicated team of officers and ask us directly, how can I help? That kind of leadership, leadership that seeks solutions, listens to the people, and brings us together is exactly what we need. In addition to being a business owner, I'm a volunteer and board member at Interfaith Community Services. The perspective I've gained via hundreds of hours of volunteering has given me a fresh perspective on the strong partnerships that are needed between businesses, law enforcement, nonprofits, and community members to make the lasting impact. As we know, Escondido is facing a crisis, and we don't have enough detox beds to meet the need. This means that people who are ready for help and aren't able to break the cycle of addiction can't get the help they need. I know this pain personally. My grandfather spent most of his life battling addiction and homelessness, and the impact rippled through generations of my family. At a young age, my mother was taken away, put into foster care. And as she grew up, she then later married a man struggling with addiction. And when my family became homeless, my siblings were taken away, put into foster care, and adopted out. I now haven't seen them still for over 12 years. Sadly, my grandfather passed away just this past May, and he was only 64 years old. I know addiction does, not just for the person struggling, but for the families that are left behind, and I know what it can mean when someone gets help. This month, I was honored with the Love Esco Hero City Heartbeat Award. I'm so grateful to be recognized, but I also want to express gratitude and recognize that the city is full of heroes. A heartbeat is a sign of life. When we work together, businesses, nonprofits, public safety, and the community, we bring life back into our city. And a hero isn't someone who just chooses to care, but who truly shows up every day and makes a difference. And that's what you all do every day, and I'm so grateful for that. Thank you for leading us, thank you for showing up, and inspiring all of us to do the same. So let's continue being the heartbeat of Escondido. Please support Interfaith's modified CUP to expand access to detox beds and help us break this cycle so we can bring home real wins for Escondido, not just for businesses, not just for public safety, but for the people who need us the most. Because together, we are the heartbeat of the city. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Concanon.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and fellow Escondido residents. My name is Tim Concanon. I've spent majority of my 65 years in this community. Grew up here, went to school here, my way to pursue an education, and then returned to raise my family here. I'm a veterinarian. I opened my first practice here three years ago. This is my home, and I'm very proud to say I'm from Escondido. Like all of you, I want to see Escondido thrive. We all know that homelessness and addiction are serious and complex issues, but they can be solved either directly or indirectly. There are no easy solutions, but the proposal before you is a step in the right direction. It aligns with the city policy on homelessness by recognizing that addiction is a major component of homelessness and that addressing it is key to improving our situation. That's exactly what this proposal does. It takes existing beds that are already approved under the current CUP and ensures that they are used in the most effective way possible, prioritizing withdrawal management, emergency shelter, and transitional housing. It ensures that when someone on our streets is ready to seek treatment, help will be available to them, here and in a safe and structured setting. This is important because having to turn someone away when they are ready to seek help is truly a tragedy for all of us. This is about helping the people who are already in our community, our fellow citizens who we see struggling in our parks, in our business districts, and on our streets. By ensuring that they have a place to go when they are ready to pursue recovery, we give them a real chance at success. And when these individuals do choose recovery, we all benefit through improved public safety, reduced strain on public services, and an overall improved well-being in the city. This proposal won't fix everything, but I believe that it is a solid and compassionate step that will provide for many a path to better health, sobriety, and a chance to reclaim their lives. This will result in a safer, healthier, and happier place for all of us to live. So I'm here this evening to ask you to please support this proposal. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Reverend Lisa Petty.
Mayor White, council members, and community members. Good evening and thank you for your time. My name is Lisa Petty, and I'm honored to be the senior pastor of the First United Methodist Church here in Escondido. We are one of the founding faith partners for Interfaith Community Services. For nearly 45 years, Interfaith has been a trusted partner in Escondido. And while I am brand new, only eight months a resident, I am very impressed by all the services that they continue to provide, food, shelter, pathways to recovery. While we all would like to live in an Escondido that doesn't have a need for these kinds of services, we don't live in that world. We live here and now, and we have the opportunity to help people here and now. Today, substance use disorder remains one of the most crucial challenges in our city, as you saw by our statistics. Every day at the church that I serve, I see and I speak with many of our unsheltered community members. We help as best we can, and this is one of the best ways we can is to point people to these services. These are people, these are human beings, just like you and me, living on the streets. They are struggling with addiction, usually mental illness and sometimes physical illness. And when you have all three of these, it's called trimorbidity. Think for a moment about the last time that you actually helped a family member or a dear friend through some kind of crisis, be it a cancer diagnosis, dialysis, any major health issue diagnosis, let alone a hidden or a not-so-hidden addiction, or a mental health crisis. Now think of that person that you love and having them have all three of those and struggling to get through them all at the same time. Because it is difficult for people with homes and support networks to survive even with just one of these hardships, let alone undergoing all three at once. It really is nearly impossible, especially without shelter, the support network, a structured withdrawal management program, mental health resources, and caring and compassionate individuals who want to help. Without programs like this modified CUP, before you tonight, countless people were stuck in this cycle and stuck on the streets. This is not only something that is a safety concern for the city, but it strains public resources like law enforcement and emergency departments, makes it harder for the city as a whole to thrive. This program will help. Interfaith's proposed modification is an enhancement, strategic, and useful in addressing these challenges. Interfaith has been committed to these things, and it's evidence-based. And I ask for you to support this tonight. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Suzy Hansen.
Honorable Mayor, council members of the city council. I'm writing to express the support of First Congregational Church of Escondido, FCE, for Interfaith Community Services' request for modification of their existing conditional use permit. The medically-supervised withdrawal treatment and recovery services proposed by Interfaith are critically needed services in Escondido. Substance use disorders and mental health issues are driving forces in housing instability and individual self-sufficiency. They contribute to social and economic uncertainty for fragile individuals and their families. The conversion of their existing 49-bed emergency shelter operation to withdrawal management services within an existing social services center is critical to safe stabilization for people experiencing substance use disorders. The withdrawal management services located in the same space previously used as an emergency shelter with no change to total capacity on-site is an efficient use of space. FCE was one of the original 14 faith communities that started Interfaith with the notion that working together, we could accomplish more to support people in our community who are marginalized. We still believe we are stronger together. At FCE, we continue to support multiple programs and services offered by Interfaith, sorry, through our congregation's volunteers, financial and material donations. We are confident that Interfaith Community Services has the management, oversight, and coordination expertise to successfully run this expanded program. In addition, this program, along with all that administered through Interfaith, embodies FCE's core values, "To love thy neighbor." We encourage you to support this modification for their existing conditional use permit. Discreetly submitted by Deborah Pint, moderator, FCE.
Our next speaker is Louise Reed. Our next speaker is Louise Reed.
I'm going to use my printer dialing at the most opportune time, of course. And so I'm going to be using, if I can get this up, I'm using my computer, hopefully. Maybe I'm not.
Technology never works when you need it.
Nope, it's going to work, okay. My name is Louise Reed. I'm Vice President of MPA, which is the Escondido Mobile Home Positive Action Community. And I am talking to you about the staff report for the approval of the surveys to the council. I have read this.
Oh, wait, wait, I'm so sorry. Wrong item, that's for the, no, I'm so sorry. That was out in 14.
It's inside of the computer.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paul Cluane.
Mayor, council members, staff, community members. Thank you for considering this important item. About three weeks ago, I attended a funeral of a young man who was 32 years old, who had put together a little over a year in his recovery from his substance use disorder. A little after that year, somebody gave him some fentanyl and he took it, and he died. And I went to the funeral and talked to his mother, and I talked to his father, and I talked to his sister, and I talked to his 10-year-old son, who he had just reunited with. These people with substance use disorders are men and women of flesh and bone, and they are mothers and fathers, and sisters and brothers, and sons and daughters, and everything else you can imagine. And they are taken down by, as was mentioned earlier, these days largely methamphetamine and fentanyl. Your police officers and firefighters see it every single day. Interfaith is offering a solution. Not the solution, and certainly not the only solution, but a solution to help our family members, our community members, our friends recover from this scourge which is leveling each new generation that comes along. I so much, I'll just tell you, I have been a social worker in San Diego County for over 45 years. I have seen this in every imaginable agency and setting. Most of my career has been in the for-profit sector, but I've spent a lot of time in the nonprofit sector also. I must say that I am thrilled and honored to be a staff member at Interfaith Community Services now. Because I've seen all types of social service agencies. And Interfaith Community Services is one of the best ones I've ever been affiliated with. This is being handed to the city of Escondido on the silver plaque to help citizens who are having a rough time with alcohol and drugs. And I do hope, and I know you, I hope you will, take advantage of what is being offered today. This new partnership between the city and Interfaith is an exciting one, and important, very importantly, it's a life-saving one. This isn't about people just being inconvenient in downtown Escondido. It's about having them overdose on fentanyl and methamphetamine and not being able to wake up again. So I want to thank you again for listening, and I want to thank you for the good work you always do.
No further comments.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. First, I want to thank, is that Veronica Cityman? Yes, Veronica Alex, thank you both for your hard work on this item. I feel like you've spent the last couple of months dedicated to Interfaith, so thank you for all of that. I want to provide just a little bit of context to how I arrived to my decision for tonight because somebody that reached out to me brought up a good point. The last time I spoke in public about Interfaith was in a newspaper and I said something to the effect of, "I believe that the relationship is beyond repair between Interfaith and the city of Escondido." Last year, things really kind of came to a head. And I think that the city is in part to blame for some of that. There was never any clear expectation set. There was never any regular communication. And when I say expectations, things as simple as, you know, loitering and litter, and things like prioritization of Escondido. I don't think we're ever... I don't know if enforced is the right word, but it was never a clear expectation between the two parties. And since then, Greg and I have met more regularly. In fact, shortly after that public explosion, we had sat down and talked. We met a couple of times, and I made several requests and expectations known. And shortly after that, he had actually brought this idea to my attention. And my response was, "I'm not going to entertain this conversation until the current violations that you've been given have been cleaned up, and let's get through the CUP process that we had gone through last month." And every single expectation that I had set forth has been met 100%. And we've now set monthly meetings, there's regular communication, and it's been, it's been a totally different relationship. With this one in particular, though, I do understand and actually sympathize for some of the concerns. Concerns about bringing people from out of town into the city for services. What happens to the individuals who don't complete the program? Are they just going to walk out onto the streets of Escondido? And that is certainly a risk that I am not going to deny in any way. There are three things that I was, primarily, three considerations I have for this item. Is this a need in our city? What is the cost to the city? And what are the potential impacts to the rest of the community? And I think you saw in the presentation, this is a need in the city. Before I became mayor, I spent some time doing property management. I have a lot of personal experience in dealing with the homeless every day, day in and day out, for about two years. And I think anybody that's had any kind of an interaction with people who are on the streets here know that there is either a substance abuse issue, or a mental health issue, or both. And I would venture to guess it's primarily substance abuse issues. And where do those people have to go now? Anybody that's willing to accept help? And the answer is nowhere. So this is certainly a need in the community. I think you saw in the presentation, the cost to us is our wonderful staff's time and attention to prepare this item. And what are the impacts to the rest of the community? So if Greg's presentation is accurate, seven out of, seven out of 10 individuals who enter the program are from Escondido. And there are three out of every 10 people who do not complete the program. And if you assume that all three of those people who don't complete the program are from Escondido, you still end up with a net loss of one person off the streets. And so to me, the risk seems worth it. Currently, right now, like I said, these people have nowhere to go to get help. And I've been left to ask myself through this entire process, what are the alternatives? Especially for a city that's been strapped for cash for quite some time. My ultimate vision has not changed. We need an emergency shelter, probably somewhere around 100, 150 beds, to get people off the streets immediately. But in the meantime, there is no alternative. And I think that that's something that needs to be considered. So I'm going to stop there, I may come back to some comments. I am going to make a motion, though. And then I'll ask for a second or just open it up to questions and comments. Can you go back to the motion you, there was a part of this. So I moved to approve item number 2025-11 with the, approve the project with no modification to E5, with some conditions. And I'm just going to ask you if any of these conditions cannot be met. You don't need to explain why, I'm going to assume it's because of HIPAA. But if you wouldn't mind just giving me a yes or no answer. I would like to see some reporting during the time that this program operates in the city of Escondido. So we'd like to know the number of individuals that came off the streets in Escondido. We'd like to know their city of origin, if possible, if they're not from Escondido. We'd like to know the number of people who did and did not complete the program. And again, this can be monthly, quarterly, we can figure all that out. But the number of people that did not complete the program and where they were released to afterwards, whether it was here or they were given transportation back to their place of origin. And then request that you notify either the city or the Escondido Police Department if anybody who does exit the program, it just exits the building.
Yes to all, except for that last one.
Okay.
For privacy reasons.
Understood. One thing that I forgot to mention before I turn it over to my colleagues. I wanted to do my due diligence. It was only a month ago that we approved the consolidation of the previous conditional use permits. That came with some pretty stringent expectations. But I wanted to drive through that neighborhood and see, was there anybody loitering? Was there any trash, did anything look out of order? And I'm pleased to report that I have nothing to report. And I think that that reflects the nature of our renewed relationship. And I think with this reporting, you know, like I said, there's risk, but with this reporting, we will know in a very short period of time whether or not this is going to create new health and safety impacts for the city of Escondido. And that's why I'm willing to take the risk on this item. So again, I support it. My motion is to approve item 2025-11 with no modification to condition E5 and the conditions that I had listed out.
I have a question about your motion.
Sure.
So E5 is the hours of five, it's the difference between 5:00 AM or 4:00 AM entry within the date, not within the dates, right? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, okay.
So you're saying that, so what I understand is from the staff report, is Interfaith is requesting 4:00 AM instead of 5:00 AM?
So staff has not had a chance to analyze that, the impacts of that? So that's the reason that it's not being brought forward tonight.
Okay, but it's being requested by Interfaith, right?
Yes.
Okay, got it. But staff is not recommending it because of the impact of that?
We have not had a chance to analyze it.
Okay, and so the mayor is, your motion is to move forward, staff recommendation? That doesn't mean later on that the 4:00 AM can be revisited or analyzed?
I was under the assumption it would be analyzed and that would come back to the City Council?
It will be analyzed.
Okay.
Got it. And that's just for me, I'm just thinking the technical, like, is that going to create violations because people are outside that one hour? That's all, I'm just kind of thinking ahead. So I'll second your motion.
Thank you. And I'll open it up for discussion for the council.
I have a question or some comments?
Sure.
If I go, may I go? And again, I really appreciate everyone that showed up because this is something serious. We all care about what's happening with the homeless, the challenges of those that are not just unsheltered, but those that have addiction problems that do need help. And I just, again, I did do some research here, and as one of the speakers pointed out, I too found that, and I'm just counting North County, that we are carrying 40%, or we provide 40% of the services for all the homeless unhoused issues in North County, which is something that really Interfaith, you should be very proud of. However, that is very disproportionate to what's going on in North County. And to take it a little step further, I just kind of want to offer you a different perspective. San Diego has the next highest number of beds, 79 beds. And that is at Father Joe's home, I believe, Father Joe's, 79 beds. So they're the, they provide the highest bedding for the unsheltered. But they have a population of 1.4 million. We have a population of 145, approximately 1,000 people. So again, I just want to give you a little bit of perspective as to how disproportionate that is. Also with this, I did take the liberty of doing some research. So I reached out to the county offices with the ones that provided this grant. And, you know, I was made aware that there's a, you know, I was told that there was a two-week deadline coming up. And actually, the conversation I had was with Dr. Luke Berkman. He's the Director of Behavioral Health Services for San Diego County. And he was very gracious, and he said that he'd be open to extending the deadline because he wants to make sure that we as a council do our due diligence. And, you know, I don't have all the answers questioned. We want to do the right thing. Another thing is, in speaking with him, and also the person that is in charge of the oversight of this grant money, Interfaith can partner with other programs. So with that, we do have several Interfaith locations here. As mentioned, there is Oceanside, there is Carlsbad, there's ourselves clearly. And one will be opening in San Marcos, that's 150, that's 150-bed facility with at least 50 residential treatment programs, if not more. I spoke to the mayor, Rebecca Jones, and they're moving forward. And they're really looking forward to being able to do their part because they too see that they have to be a part of this regional, North County regional solution. I spoke with Mayor John Franklin, and there's an opportunity there as well to provide 50 beds and partner with Interfaith. That is something that an organization there is really seeking to do. So we have to look at those opportunities. Oceanside and Carlsbad recently were granted $11 million to work with Interfaith, again, to provide those rehabilitative services, the residential services. All that to say this is, we want to make people better, we want to get people better, it's heartbreaking. At the same time, we can push out the 49 that are unhoused, that are needing emergency shelter, and bear the brunt of the whole county. In speaking with the people from the county, it was clear, they made it clear, that this is a regional service. So if anybody that needs help in the county, and I pay attention to words. And what are the words that, Greg Angel, maybe you can help out with this, was that Escondido residents would be preferred. I'd rather it be prioritized. So there's a difference between preferred and prioritized. So I do have a couple of questions for you in terms of what your definition of an Escondido resident is. I looked at what California considers a resident, and it's slightly more strict than what you described. And then I also just remembered what the mayor and us here at the council, how we actually gave a little bit more room in saying, you know, as long as they have ties here, if they've worked here, if they have somebody that could care for them, you know. So we were even a little bit more flexible and, again, because we care. But I am curious where you came to the conclusion, or where did you define, or just help me understand, how a person who has been here sleeping in our streets for two days or 24 hours would now be considered an Escondido resident?
Thank you, council member. We prioritize individuals who are here in Escondido by outreach to individuals who are here in Escondido, who are unsheltered and who are in need of addiction treatment services. who are unsheltered and who are in need of addiction treatment services. We also have homeless outreach teams that engage and provide case management and do in-depth assessments of individuals who are unsheltered here in Escondido. Those in-depth assessments reveal that 80% of the people who are unsheltered here in Escondido have what you just described, that connection in some way. Most of them are from here, are raised...
I think you misunderstood my question. My question is, in the planning commission meeting, I listened to the planning commission meeting, you were specifically asked what qualifies someone to be considered a resident to be able to enroll in that program. And your answer was two days and I'm just trying to understand. I understand who and the outreach and I understand that part. But I just wanna understand the two-day minimum requirement for them to be considered an Escondido resident.
There is no two-day requirement. This program is open to all individuals.
I understand that. Where did you come up with, anybody who has lived here for two days is now a resident?
I'm not sure, I don't, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
It's in the planning commission. It's, I think, at 2 hours 11 minutes. You described it there. You said two days. And so that's concerning to me because then you said that... And again, I do wanna treat and you're gonna prefer Escondido residents and then versus prioritize that. Language changed and language is important to me because language show intentions to me. You also said that those that are deciding not to be a part of the program, they're gonna be returned to where they came from because as we discussed even in our private meeting, that we are concerned that if they're out of the program and stay in our neighborhoods, they could potentially be a threat. We have businesses that are thriving. We are, Escondido's just recovering so nicely right now. And now we're having those that have been here that really aren't residents according to California law and I don't know how many people would agree with that two-day description or that you came up with. If they're returning to their homes, if they've been here two days, then basically they're being released to our streets. And also, and also if they're refusing treatment, if they're refusing treatment as a resident, as a resident, will they not be released just to be back in the city that they came from, which would be Escondido? Is that not correct?
I appreciate the opportunity to clarify. So first, I use the words prefer and prioritize interchangeably. If that's created confusion, I apologize. We prefer and we prioritize through how we outreach to, screen and bring people into the program. And in terms of where they are from, we are outreach to individuals who are physically here in Escondido. I'm not sure, I maybe misspoke on this two-day definition. I don't recall.
You said two days and then you said 24 and it is, it's in the recording because I had to listen to it again, which surprised me.
I have no doubt that I said it. What I, what I'm trying to say is that we don't have a two-day requirement. There is no requirement that anyone have residency anywhere to access this program. It is a program that is open to all individuals. However, functionally, we prioritize access by outreach to individuals who are physically here in Escondido.
Now, I think, let me just make sure that you understand totally. Essentially, it was about who is an Escondido resident? That, you know, we're talking about specifically Escondido residents getting the treatment. And so that's where that conversation went. So I'm not comfortable with that because again, it's... If these people that were considered Escondido residents because they were on our streets for sleeping, the words were sleeping in our streets for two days, they can be released back into Escondido because now they're residents and that could create a whole host of problems in our city. Also... Also...
Please, go ahead and open it.
Also, we have the problem with the 49 that need the emergency shelter. So it's like we're pushing those out and again, to provide these important services, there needs to be a greater effort. We talk about partnership and collaboration. And I don't think this is something that's, it's a regional issue. It can't just be Escondido trying to solve the Escondido issue because we're gonna be receiving people from throughout the region. So I think that, you know, as I spoke to the people at the county, they were open to that. They were open to extending the deadline and maybe you guys can have a conversation to maybe work out a little bit more details. As I said, the other cities, they wanna be a part of working in this regional issue, understanding that we are providing this part of service and the county is requiring that they provide some in theirs and they're going along with it. And then a couple of cities want the, those treatments to go. The good news is with that, we can continue serving the unhoused, with the emergency housing here. And we can continue serving those that need the treatment by allowing them and helping them go with the assistance in the other facilities. Because really, it's, so I think in terms of my understanding from what the mayors were saying and then also what Dr. Luke Berkman was saying, as far as exploring some flexibility, I think that, again, we, as a city council, our first job is to improve the quality of life for all residents, which includes the homeless. But again, it's all residents. So I want to just... I'm going to propose that maybe we postpone the vote after listening to this and look at the other solutions and reach out to the county, see what kind of extension because they do wanna work with you and of course, doing these in the other cities. But this is just, there's just too many loose ends in this in my opinion and I do not wanna risk negatively impacting the people in the city that are working hard to really turn things around. So we have to take their lives into consideration as well and how it could potentially... I'm not saying it's going to now, but there is a potential that if this isn't done right and we're making a swift decision now, that it's gonna be hard to fix because then we're locked into a five-year agreement with the county who's gonna call the shots.
A few points of clarification. Thank you, council member, for your excellent research. Thank you for reaching out to our partners who we work with together, both in other cities and the county. First, the emergency shelter bed. The emergency shelter does not operate. It has been closed since fall of '23. There was no funding for it. Funding was removed from it and we had to close that program. There's nobody being displaced by this and in fact, we have an underutilized resource. We're seeking urgently a way to bring that resource back. This is the way to do that. So there are no emergency shelter beds available currently that this action impacts. Second, when we say that we provide transportation back to the community of origin, that is where the individual is from. So if they were homeless on the streets here for a week, but they are originally from Santee, we'll provide them transportation to get them back to Santee, to get them back to a place that's hopefully safe and hopefully a positive step in the right direction for them.
But they can refuse to...
Absolutely. It's a free will program. Everything that we provide is voluntary. The individuals that come into the program, however, are voluntarily choosing to do so. They're taking the bold step to improve their lives and to leave their past behind, to access a better life going forward. These individuals, they don't then voluntarily decide the next day to go back to using and to do so in a strange community they don't know. So, when someone does come from another place, they're provided transportation back to that. You mentioned the timeframe. We do have a five-year contract with the county of San Diego. However, we operate the pleasure of the city. We operate under a conditional use permit. If there are concerns, challenges, issues that arise from this, we'll be providing ongoing monthly, quarterly reports on the activities and we will work in partnership to address any of those concerns.
Another question, last question regarding the residents and serving those in our city. So again, we have the 70 and 80% that you said are from Escondido. And I don't believe I, I, I'm not sure if you answered this. So, based on your 24-hour, two-day definition of what a resident is, of the 70 and 80%, how many people who have only been here for two days are included in that grouping?
So, we don't have data, let me be clear on two things as I answer your question. First, 70% of the people who come into our Withdrawal Management Services program are physically unsheltered and physically here in Escondido. That's the definition. There's no two days. This is somebody who's here in Escondido and they're coming into our program. We don't have data on what their long-term history in Escondido is. What we do have is a parallel set of data on the general homeless population that we work with through our homeless outreach teams. That's through our case management engagement with unsheltered individuals. And that data set shows that 80% are from Escondido, have ties to Escondido. And that's also corroborated by what we do in other communities where the numbers are very similar, between 75 and 80%. Unsheltered are in that community for a reason. Usually it's because they're from their, their families there. Sometimes it's because they're, they're working there. I met a young man on the homeless count just a couple of weeks ago, born and raised here, just got a job at a local business and he was asking about how to get into our treatment program. Just as an example.
So I think, I mean, this is very important. Obviously, there's a, it's a horrible pandemic. It's just addiction everywhere. But again, I think that making this decision tonight is very short-sighted and making this decision focusing just on Escondido when the reality is we're gonna be getting people from throughout the region. And then, we, I would really like to ask that we do a little bit more research to see how, when we say we wanna collaborate and partner, well, let's see outside of the city and the mayors and other organizations, you know, what part they can do to where the brunt of it, you know, right now it's, we're, it's greatly disproportionate, as I said. And I don't want it to be grossly disproportionate. And, but I think that, on the bedding aspect too, that's another question I didn't, I didn't answer or explain. There may be opportunities for that to be funded as well as with the, and I'll give you the names. I wrote down the names of who I spoke to. But, you know, to maybe be able to get those beds up and running. So I think, you know, maybe...
Would you like to offer a substitute motion?
Pardon me?
Would you like to offer a substitute motion?
To the one that we just made?
So substitute, you can make a substitute motion to postpone the item?
Yeah, okay.
And if it gets a second, that motion has to be voted on first?
All right, we'll do that. I make the motion, substitute item and...
Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote on that real quick and if it fails, we'll return to the first motion.
Can you state the substitute motion? What is your substitute motion?
Well, to, well, mine was to extend the vote.
Table the item till the next city council meeting?
Right. And again, it was the, because I was told from the person that's working there in the county that they would be flexible with that. So the council can do their due diligence and get all the information because quite frankly, this wasn't enough because there's so much in here. And so I wanted to make sure to see what other options there were in order for us to be able to serve all North County better as we've been serving people from other areas of North County and Escondido.
So to be clear, the substitute motion is to table the item till the next city council meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead and vote on that real quick.
Voting is open. Is yours?
Substitute motion.
Motion failed. White, Deputy Mayor Martinez, Councilwoman Christian Garcia, no. Councilwoman Joa Garcia, Councilwoman Stroh, yes.
Okay. I forgot to mention a couple of things, then I'm gonna turn it over to council member Garcia here. I actually share the concern about bringing people in from other cities. I know I mentioned that earlier, but I didn't go into detail on that. I think if we were having a conversation about opening an emergency shelter that the city did not have the control over, I don't, I don't think that would be a conversation that the city would entertain at this time. There are certainly services that draw people into the city. Naturally, people are gonna go where they can get their basic needs met, whether that's food, showers, clothing, tents, whatever the case may be. I am a firm believer that that does draw people into the city. This is a very specific service that they are requesting to offer in the city. And it's a service that nobody is going to travel from Santee or San Diego to go get checked in. More than likely, I'm assuming, you can correct me if I'm wrong, they are coming because they were reached out to by an outreach worker and it probably took some convincing to get them here. And I think with a dedicated, this is where the, the conditions that I put in to let us know what exactly is going on, but having two dedicated outreach workers specifically in the city of Escondido to try to fill those beds is enough for me to at least give this a shot. And like Greg said, you know, I mentioned earlier, if this creates a health and safety issue, if this does create a public health and safety issue, the city council will reconsider the item. But there is no alternative at the moment. And, shoot, there was one more thing. But I don't remember what it was and I'll probably come back when he's done talking, so. Oh, for sure.
So, thank you so much, Greg Angel, his staff, for... Do you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, can I finish? I'm so, I'm so sorry.
We should try tugging him on the phone.
With respect to from Escondido, so in the original policy, the very first policy that the Escondido City Council considered, it does, I believe it specifically states, "Escondido first." We wanna help those with ties to Escondido who are from Escondido. And I wholeheartedly stand by that. However, in this particular situation, I believe it can still be Escondido first, Escondido prioritized, preferred, whatever you wanna call it. But I know some of you are business owners in the city and I would venture to say that if the individual sleeping in front of your store was willing to accept a bed, you would probably not care if they were born here or not. You just want them to get away from there. And this is really the only avenue. So I'm gonna finish now, but I, I respect what you're saying. I happen to agree with you about three-quarters of the way. This is just a very specific service that I think we will get the majority of the benefit for. So, thank you, council member.
So thank you, staff, and thank you, Greg. So, just a, so thank you for answering the, the question about, because I received, you know, a lot of public comment on this item, a lot of written comment. One of them was, you know, what happens to the emergency beds? So thank you for saying there is no displacement. This is definitely a need in the community. As far as regional, how many other cities offer withdrawal management beds in their communities?
Most other cities do have Withdrawal Management Services beds. The largest number are coming online in the city of San Diego and downtown San Diego. But there are other programs that are in the process of different stages of being open and being available.
Okay. Do, do our neighbors along the 7, 8 corridor have these kind of beds, the withdrawal management?
I'd have to get back to you on the specifics.
I'm just trying to understand the landscape of services related to withdrawal management. And I think that you just, everyone who has offered input on this, we, it's very important to me to hear from our community, from business owners, from residents, people who are experiencing homelessness, people who are experiencing substance disorders. I do very much think that we need this service in our community. What, and I don't know if staff will answer this or you, Greg, but what, you mentioned some like, you know, check-ins or report backs. It's, it's five years that you have this grant funding, right? What is like our check-ins to see, you know, how things are going? Like, what's the timeline for that? Like, is it every six months you come back and give a report? I don't remember seeing that in the staff report or in the actual agreement.
Yes, currently that is one of the existing conditions that they have from the city initiated CUP and this current one. That condition was not changed. It was a requirement for at least at a minimum annual reporting, which would initiate within the first 90 days of this approval. And it sounds like city council would like to suggest we could have more regular intervals of this reporting.
I would like to see more regular and I appreciate, because, you know, we've had conversations over the years, Greg, and I've always said communicate more with all of us, you know, because we are five council members with five, you know, differing opinions and lived experiences. So I feel it's very important on this issue because our residents, we're the ones that hear about it, right? And so I would love to be able to... And so I would love to be able to answer questions, share information to you on issues or uncertainties that our community has. So for me, communication is key. Let's see, I had written some notes during, when you were speaking, so I just want to refer back to them. At one point a few years ago, councilmember, now he's an assembly member, councilmember from the city of San Diego ward, Christopher Ward, would convene an intergovernment subcommittee of the regional task force on homelessness. Does that still exist, and does that still need?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. So just hearing my colleague, Councilmember Fitzgerald's concerns, I think valid concerns, and these are things that I also hear from our constituents, I think it would be good to start convening elected officials around this issue that is top issue for everybody in all of our cities. At some point, there was, I think, an informal or some type of gathering of seventy elected officials around this issue, and I believe Greg used firstly in those meetings. Do you recall what the name of that was, and is that group still meeting?
Group does not meet. It was an ad hoc committee on homelessness with elected representatives from the Innovate Seventy-Eight.
Okay, it was tied to Innovate Seventy-Eight?
Yeah, that group did successfully bring forward an investment from the county for homeless outreach workers who are still interested in it.
Which was successful, and I think we need to just continue those kind of collaborations and communications with elected officials. For the longest time, I kept wondering why Samarco didn't offer services, and I would always hear that. And again, I don't want to say that they ever said that. None of the elected officials from there ever told me that they don't have unhoused people in their communities, but that was like the word on the street, is Samarco does not have unhoused folks, therefore they don't offer services. And I don't agree with that, but that's the word on the street. So I'm happy to hear that they are now going to be actively participating and offering services. Also, I know in Vista, it's a priority for them, and they have a parking program. So I just think it's important for the different cities to talk to each other. However that looks like, I'm just saying, in the six years that I've been here, there has been somewhat of communication. I'm glad that it has resulted in some positive impacts. It should continue, right? We should all be sharing best practices. And that was one of the things that was coming out of that intergovernment subcommittee through the regional task force on homelessness, which I got to participate in a couple of those meetings. Opportunities for funding would also be discussed at those meetings. You know, who's applying for what, and where does it make sense? You know, putting in joint applications with jurisdictions similar to what Carlsbad and Oceanside did. So it just requires like really intentional communication between the different cities. There's opportunities maybe at legal cities to maybe propose these ideas there. I know we're members of legal cities. So I'll also bring this up because I'm one of the representatives for that for our cities. So just I'll just say that I want to see more collaboration, more communication, and sharing of best practices. And I think this is a step in the right direction. Quick question on the six-to-one vote from the planning commission, what was the one vote, the one dissenting vote concern, if you have that?
I cannot speak directly to the commissioner's concern, unfortunately. I can give you information that it was Mr. Berry's here, one of our commissioners.
Okay, but they didn't share why, they just said to him.
So they did express concerns that have been similarly echoed here regarding residents' preference for Escondido folks?
Thank you. Just always curious about those. And then another thing, and Councilmember Fitzgerald was talking about definitions and how, you know, and language. And I think if we had the regional task force on the homeless, if we have, like, we have the Alliance, what was that meeting that I went to on Thursday? The Alliance for Regional Solutions? Like, those are things, those are bodies that already need, and we should be having these conversations in those existing, you know, meeting locations. But is there a shared definition that the county uses, that providers use on like what's considered a resident? What, you know, certain terms that are used for your like CUP application? I think having like a glossary of terms is important to make sure that, for data purposes, that we're collecting data, right? We're measuring outcomes on how successful or effective these programs are. We should all be at the county level, on the regional level, on the same page on definitions and how we talk about this issue. I don't know if that exists or not.
The definitions are clear. They are though usually different per program or entity. You mentioned the county. There's also the regional task force on homelessness and their homeless management information system. Those utilize different...
And then there's like the state, and then there's federal. So if it's possible, I know it's hard, you know, but I support the, you know, having those publicly available for, so we can really refer and understand what terms mean. So just, I support that, and that's a valid concern, Councilmember Fitzgerald. So that is all that I have as far as concerns. Keep, I would say, continue on your recent path of just being very communicative with us. And I appreciate that you did listen to some suggestions that I had at the last meeting, and I've already seen you implement some of those, so I think that's a step in the right direction. And this is definitely a service that we need. And hopefully, we will inspire other communities to offer these services. And I understand it's scary because it's unknown, and we don't really have the service now. So I would just say, you know, it's, we have to do this. It's important. And I appreciate that we'll have an opportunity to chime in to address any potential issues that result. And I will, and be sure you'll be hearing from me if residents complain or have any concerns. I'll be definitely passing those along to you, Greg. So I'm going to go ahead and support my original second to the mayor's motion to approve tonight's item, as staff recommended.
His conditions?
He doesn't have conditions.
Just the reporting conditions alone?
Oh, yeah, of course. I want reporting. I thought that was already in the CUP, but more, the more, you know, not waiting a year, but maybe quarterly would be great.
And this is a little bit more specific than what the CUP says.
Well, what did you add?
It was, it related, excuse me, related to this program. It was just a report of the number of individuals who were off the streets of town.
Right, except that one item that you said couldn't. Yeah, got it. Yes, thank you. That's all my comments for now.
Sir?
All right. Thank you, staff. Thank you, Greg, for the presentation, for your guys' work, for your efforts of getting together and coming up with this. So I do have the same concerns as what's been expressed here. More services means bringing in more people, drawing them from different communities. I know we've talked about that at length, so, but I also have the same concerns. You know, one of the things that I had mentioned before is we need to stop being a hub for homeless people to come crash and stay here in Escondido. I think that's been a big concern for people all over the county. And I think it continues to be a concern, and it's something that I've heard a lot of people bring to my attention on this specific item. As I mentioned, we shouldn't be a hub for people, for different shelters for homelessness. But I think what we've been doing in collaboration, both at the city level in terms of our policies and collaboration with Interfaith, it seems to be working. In our last, I was reading the UT just the other day, and it said that Escondido had a surprisingly bare amount of homeless tents when they did the homeless count. And that was encouraging. I think it was success on our part and success on Interfaith's part of drawing those people off the streets and getting them into the shelter. And also the policies that we've enforced as well, I think, has been effective. And I think it's important to mention that because, well, you know, last year, we implemented quite a few policies last year that were, the candid bans, the RV bans, there was quite a few of them, to disapprove of a lot of people in this room, quite frankly. But we did that because we wanted to set up a foundation of enforcement and of order before we could expand on opportunities like providing shelters. So we needed a strong foundation, a strong base before we start going into programs and start exploring different options. And I think one of the options that are being explored is this one right here. So I have a couple of questions, more than a couple of questions, but you've answered quite a few of them already, so I do appreciate that. So this is a fourteen-day, this is a fourteen-day detox, ten to fourteen days, depending on how your staff views the patient, essentially, and how they're progressing. Is that, ten to fourteen days, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then they're transitioned out. The programs that they're being transitioned out to are not exclusively in Escondido. We're transitioning them out to other cities that are providing services. Is that correct?
Correct.
Where are those places? How many of them? And what percentage are we looking at as opposed to the ones that are staying here and being transitioned to other places?
The most common connection out of our Withdrawal Management Services Program is to our co-located longer-term residential treatment program. We also work with other residential treatment programs here in Escondido as well as in other cities. Most cities do have long-term residential treatment programs. I believe Vista has the largest amount of those beds. But similar to the question asked by Councilmember Martinez, I'd have to get back to you on specifics of the layout and distribution of those resources.
Okay, but essentially, there are, there's, I guess, a significant amount that's not staying into the part in Escondido or being transitioned to different cities, is that...
Diversity of longer-term treatment options.
Yes, okay. All right, and that's good to know. Now, the shelters typically, whenever we have a homeless shelter, what are we looking at typically in terms of if an individual comes for services? Is there, is there a time limit on it? How much are the time limits typically, whether it's Interfaith or other places? And is there anything that keeps them from moving, other than capacity, that keeps them from moving in and out of the shelter?
So the question is about emergency shelters, if I'm understanding correctly. And there is a pretty, pretty wide spectrum of how those operate and what their rules and conditions, policies, and procedures are. And in North County, there are a number of shelters that work together in partnership with funding from other North County cities. Last year, very few of the individuals who were in that shelter moved to another shelter. There's very little bouncing around between one location to another. Most shelters, and I can certainly speak for the shelters that we've operated past and currently, do not allow for an individual to exit and return within a six-month period. And there are a lot of reasons for that. One reason is to motivate individuals to utilize that shelter to not need it in future.
But, and how long typically, at least the ones that we've operated here, how long do they, yeah, are they allowed to stay there?
Shelters are usually up to six months. Some are as short as thirty days. The versions that we have operated and continue to operate utilize the six-month model because it often takes some time to get everything in order and to line up that next housing.
And I guess that's my, the point of my question here is, when we're looking at shelters of six months, essentially, they're at capacity then for extended periods of time, which prevents other people from moving into the shelters. This one, we're talking about ten to fourteen days, where then they are transitioned to potentially other cities, getting them off our streets and even getting them off out of Escondido, essentially. For the betterment, I think of the community businesses, the people who have these concerns of them staying here, and then going to other cities where they also provide, and they pull from people who originated on the streets of Escondido. I mean, is that, I guess the timeframe, we're talking about ten to fourteen days as opposed to hundred and eighty days?
Yeah, and there's a, there's a very effective continuum of care in place. So an individual can enter the Withdrawal Management Services Program, then move into a longer-term residential treatment program, usually three to four months in that program. Then after that, move into a sober living home with additional aftercare services and outpatient treatment services. And while they're in that sober living home, they're often moving back into the workforce, and they're building back up their income to be able to self-sustainably live without needing any ongoing subsidies.
Okay. Of the, so I looked at the numbers, you know, you're talking about thirty percent of people that are getting served here, and about thirty percent of them do, sorry, thirty percent of people that are served are not, are not being pulled from the streets of Escondido. And I think, and I mentioned this to you before, I don't like to use the word residence, you know, because for the same concerns, they're not, they don't have prior residence here or addresses or some kind of tie. So let's just say thirty percent of them are not being pulled from the streets of Escondido. And thirty percent are not finishing the program. So we're, let's assume that it's equitable. About nine percent therefore are not from Escondido and not finishing the program. I think the number is about six to nine percent. How many of those, and you're talking about transportation services, of that nine percent, it's six to eight, nine percent, how many would you say do accept transportation back to the city of origin?
Most accept that transportation. One of the, I think, pieces of wisdom of what's been discussed tonight is providing very clear data on that.
Yes.
Because I think it's important to be able to identify exactly what those outcomes are.
And that's what I would like to see too. If we're talking about of that nine percent, ninety percent are going back to the city of origin, I think that's a huge win. If we're talking about ten percent are accepting our transportation back, well, then that's a major concern because they're staying here when they weren't pulled from here in the first place. We're drawing more in. So I think that data is absolutely consequential. It's monumental. We need to get it. And I'd like to see it on a regular basis, as mentioned. Because I would like to revisit this in six months and see, hey, is this working? We're seeing an increase or because of this program, I think we need to revisit it if it does pass. And you mentioned how those who do not complete, how do we get them sent back? We talked about that. We talked about what we would do. Essentially, there's no new, we're not expanding the amount of beds. As mentioned before, we're just keeping it at the amount that there is. We're just moving it from the unsheltered to detox. We can notify the police, that was another question. The completion rate, you said seventy percent, I believe, how many are people from streets of Escondido? Are they coming here? And regular updates? I guess that's the, you've answered everything else, or it's been asked already by my colleagues. So I just want to make a statement to the audience here. As mentioned, we drew a hard line last year for public safety. Public safety was first. We passed multiple policies. Like I said, many of you disapproved of those policies. I've heard from quite a few of you. But we did that, like I said, to make sure that we had this foundation. And one of the things that was pointed out was that in our policy statement, we said, we also said sobriety is the only option. Now that we've made public safety undisputably our priority, we now need to follow up with what our statement was, which is only, which is sobriety being the only option. We have to provide sober living, sober options for people who are here and who are getting recruited or who are seeking help. Because the alternative is that they stay on the streets. And no amount, we know this, right? No amount of policing that's going to, or law enforcement is going to be effective unless, and we have that, right? We have these bans, and we are increasing the police department, we're increasing law enforcement. So for those who have, who do want to seek help, not, they no longer have the option of staying on the streets, so we have to give them the option, an off-ramp, in order to improve their lives. So that's all I'm going to say for now, and I thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience, Joe.
That's okay. Well, I'm the other member of the homeless subcommittee here in the city of Escondido. And I've had the opportunity to be able to help draft some of the, or help draft the policies that came out of the homeless subcommittee. And yes, as Councilmember Garcia, no relation has expressed, there was a lot of unhappy supporters or unhappy for those policies. I do believe that we begin to see some positive outcome regarding them. But I also believe that we need to get a handle on this uncontrolled explosion of unhoused population in Escondido. We've had a sixty-seven percent growth in one year. We've had, our last numbers bear out, thirty-one point nine percent growth. Those are the reality of the amount of growth that we've had here in Escondido. And I believe that we need to be able to get a control of that before we move into something like this. Because I believe this will be an attraction. Because this Interfaith is a regional solution. They do a wonder, seventy percent, that's great, but there's still thirty percent that are not. And it's likely a majority are going to stay in Escondido. Talk about definitions. I asked last time you were here, how do you define "from Escondido"? And the answer was, they come from the streets. There was no time element or anything, and you were consistent with that today, that there's nothing that stays. So as long as they've been in Escondido, they can get off the bus and they're from Escondido. So I have issues. I looked at this, the per capita data, and Escondido is number one in North County with Oceanside following and then Vista. But then what I found very interesting is the cities that don't offer hardly any services at all, the amount of per capita of homelessness in there is extremely low. Escondido's point four zero, Oceanside is point three zero, Vista is point two zero, Carlsbad is point one three, Ramona is point zero six, San Marcos is point zero four, Fallbrook is point zero three, and Poway is about point zero one. And the difference, what is the difference? The difference is where services are being offered. And what I've been reading is that there's an increase in the cities that are now beginning to offer services. So I do have that concern. And I don't need to go around and keep talking about it. I think we're just a little early right now at this. Do I want people to be able to get off the streets? Absolutely. Do I want them to get treatment? Absolutely. Have I sought treatment for people that I know? Absolutely. Have I had my churches paid for it? Absolutely. Have we sent family members out, even out of this country so they can get services? Absolutely, I've done that. But the reality is sixty-seven percent growth, thirty-one point nine percent growth, those are realities. That's, that, those are the numbers that we went out and counted. And I said "we" because I also participated. Last couple of years, I haven't been able to, but I've definitely gone out there and counted. I've sat in the patrol car and I've seen, I communicate with the whole Escondi, the unhoused population, not only here in Escondido, but in Carlsbad and in Oceanside and in Fallbrook, where I have churches. I have those conversations. I have gone and right along with interfaith personnel to listen, to see what's going on, how the response is. And I've been very concerned, but all I get is, when I express my concern, that it's denial, I don't want, no, no, don't want, don't want. Oh, well, it takes a long time. I get that. It takes a long time, but how many really? How, how, how long? How many, I mean, we can't, or any organization can't force them to take them back and offer. Can't say, get in the car, I'm going to take you back. But the reality is that they're defined as being from Escondido. So it'd be just fine to leave them in Escondido. So I don't need to keep going around and around and around on this. The policy that we enacted was Escondido first. I don't think that we're doing that tonight. I think the numbers are clear, that there's an explosion going on in Escondido, and that we need to get some kind of handle on it before we do something like this. Not that we shouldn't, that we don't need it. So we needed to control it this first. That's my concern. That's what I've been talking about for a while. And it's clear, it's, it, it's clear that places that offer services have a higher per capita amount of unhoused population in, than the ones that don't. That, the numbers bear it out. We could disagree with it, but those, those are the numbers. We could try to justify it, talk about all kinds of stuff, and I wish, and I think, and I hope, but those, those are the numbers. Those are the numbers. So at this time, I am opposed to this, and I will vote no on it. Would I like to visit it at a later time? Absolutely. But for right now, I think this is the wrong way to go as a city. I'll leave my comments at, at that place, and I don't need to say anymore because we've talked a lot about this.
All right. Thank you, colleagues, for all of your time and attention on this matter. Thank you, sir. And I will go ahead and call for the vote.
Voting is up. Motion approved for you to, Councilman Joe Garcia.
Anybody who doesn't want to stick around for the rest of the meeting, you're, you're free to leave. Definitely not. Yeah, we're going to recess for five minutes. All right, we're going to reconvene our meeting. We're on current business, item fourteen, annual update on mobile home park rent control reporting.
Okay.
It's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Danielle Lopez, you're Housing and Neighborhood Services Manager. And Carlos Cervantes, our Neighborhood Services Management Analyst overseeing mobile home parks. Tonight, we'll be providing an update on mobile home park annual survey. We will provide an overview of the history of mobile home park rent control. We'll talk about what the survey is and where to find it. And then we'll provide an update on where we are with the past and current surveys and potential financial impacts of that. And then we'll close out with questions and comments. So this is a map of our mobile home parks in the city of Escondido. We have thirteen family mobile home parks and eight senior parks. All the parks identified in red are owned by a management company. So in these parks, the residents either own their home and rent the land or rent both. And the two that are green, which are the Views on Valley Parkway and Mountain Shadows on Citricado, are resident-owned. So that means the resident owns the land and the home. Additionally, in those two parks that are notated green there, the city owns lots in those parks. We own four in the Views and nineteen in Mountain Shadows. And so how that came about, in nineteen ninety-one, the city purchased these two parks because they saw an opportunity to provide affordable homeownership opportunities to our residents. So since then, we've been selling the units. We currently still own, how many do I, I'm sorry, twenty-three. We have nineteen in Mountain Shadows and four in the Views. So we are working now to sell two of them, and then we have another two coming in the next several months that may be up for sale as well. And just to be clear, we only own the land, not the mobile homes on the land.
Not the coaches.
Not the coaches. So a little bit of history of mobile home rent control. On June eighth, nineteen eighty-eight, the city of Escondido residents voted to approve Proposition K to enact mobile home rent control in the city of Escondido. So basically, what that means is that whenever a park wants to raise the rent in their park, they have to come to the city for review by the Mobile Home Rent Review Board. And in the city of Escondido, the Mobile Home Rent Review Board is the city council. So the original application process, commonly referred to as the long-form application, takes eleven factors into consideration when determining if the request for increase is just fair and reasonable. And some of the things that they consider are the consumer price, the change in Consumer Price Index, or CPI, comparable rents, length of time since the last hearing, capital improvements made in the park, changes in property tax, changes in rent of the land, changes in utility costs, operating costs, and the need for any repairs in the park. In nineteen ninety-seven, the board adopted changes to the Mobile Home Rent Review Board guidelines to allow the acceptance of a short-form application. The short form is a abbreviated version of the long-form application and only takes into consideration the change in CPI. A couple of other requirements for the short form, it has to apply to a hundred percent of the spaces, and the applicant can only apply one year from the date the last application was deemed complete. So this is a quick overview of the rent review process from the time that we received the application to the, to the date of the hearing. So we received the application, a notice is immediately sent out to the residents. That notice will include the amount of the increase, when the resident meeting will be, when the code inspection will be, when the council hearing will be. After that, staff has thirty days to initially determine if the application is complete or not. And I say initially because there is oftentimes a lot of back and forth. A lot of times, we have to ask for additional backup information to show the history of why, why a coach has changed hands or changed price. So we'll, once the application is deemed complete and we have everything that we need, we host a resident meeting where we go out and present the application to the residents. We hear their concerns. We talk about the hearing and the process for that. We also look to get a resident representative to come speak at the, at the hearing. And then that same evening, we do the lighting inspection, which is part of the code inspection. And then the following day, we go back and do an inspection of the common areas. From there, a ten-day notice is provided prior to the hearing, just to remind the residents one more time, if they'd like to come and speak, they can do so. We do a code reinspection, and then we hold that public hearing. With that code reinspection, no increase can be implemented until all code violations that were identified in the initial inspection can, are resolved. So typically, they have, we typically give them thirty days to do that in between the inspection and the hearing, and, and everything's usually typically handled. So now I'm going to turn it over to Carlos. He's going to talk a little bit more about what the survey is and how we use it.
Thank you, Danielle. So now we'll get into the, the details about the annual surveys themselves. So that was background on what kind of brought us here. And then also a little more background information. So at a previous council meeting, it was brought forth that some reports of the annual surveys were missing from the city's website. So it was brought to our attention and it kind of presented us to see if we have that information and what we can do to present it to the public. So aside from the rent increase applications though, each mobile home park is required to submit, excuse me, certain documents to the city annually. One of those, as seen here, is the annual survey. So now, what is the annual survey? The surveys are yearly reports submitted by park management from each mobile home park detailing any changes or updates since the previous years. The reports are utilized to verify, excuse me, and confirm that no unauthorized rent increases have occurred and assist with confirming the accuracy of data submitted with rent increase applications. So why do we require this report? We use it to confirm that the rent after an in-place transfer is correct and that it has not been increased above the allowable increase from the last rent review board hearing. Then, so in-place transfer is basically the transfer of an ownership of a mobile home park from one owner to another one with the home remaining on that same lot. So the coach will not be removed, just the owner will come in and take new ownership of the home itself. One of the data points that we look at on the report itself is the average, is the park average rent. Upon the closure of an in-place transfer, the park owner may increase the space rent to the greater average space rent plus eight percent or the final space rent plus eight percent, whichever is greater. Additionally, not all parks turn in an increase application every year. So the survey is a tool to monitor any changes in rent that have taken place since the last survey. As shown on the slide above, each survey includes tenant names, current rent types, types of lease with last rent control hearing, and date of last increase. Additionally, each park is to provide the park name and address along with current owner's information and phone number. All spaces must be listed on the park from the survey each year regardless if the space is vacant or occupied. And by enforcing these measures, the city promotes adherence to regulations, reinforces accountability, and ensures fairness in mobile home park operations. I'll take a look at where you can find the annual survey. So the surveys are due every October fifteenth, but the information can be found on the city's website under the Housing and Neighborhood Services location, under Mobile Home Rent Control Administration, and Mobile Home Park Owners. It will then be under the Annual Park Update forms. And then these forms, like I mentioned, are sent to the park managers two months prior to the actual due date of October fifteenth. So communication with the parks. So each park's management staff was notified via email of the October fifteenth due date, along with all copies of the requested documents as well. Three notices were sent out to the parks, with the first one being on August twenty-ninth, and then the two reminders being, first one on September twenty-fourth, and the second one being on October eighth. So here's an example of the actual average rent by park report that we provide on the city's website. Once surveys are received, the report is generated with their average rents, total spaces, and park type. The support is provided online following, following the review of each survey. It can be found on the Housing and Neighborhood Services website. And we're just showing you an example of the report itself. On the city's website, it will have the full parks and all their information listed as well. And then these are real numbers from the twenty twenty-four report as well. So now we'll take a look, we'll take a look at the report for the year twenty twenty-four. So based on the information that we just showed you, this is what we have pulled, and then, just like I mentioned before, what is available to the public. So the mean or average for all parks in twenty twenty-four was roughly six hundred twenty, with the median or middle value being roughly five ninety-five. The minimum rent for the, for all parks in the city of Escondido was three, roughly three seventy-eight, but these parks, or this rent was for only parks that have the lots owned by the city of Escondido. Aside from the lots owned by the city of Escondido, the next lowest would be roughly four hundred twenty-eight dollars, with the max rent for any park in the city of Escondido being roughly one thousand one hundred eleven. And then, aside from that, the average base rent for, within the county of San Diego for a mobile home park is roughly a thousand dollars. But it should be noted that this is for all spaces in the city of Escondi, for the county of San Diego, not just for rent control spaces. So it'll include all lease types in that average. And then if you would like to see more information on this, like I mentioned, the reports are now available for the years twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three on the city's website as well. So with the twenty twenty-four surveys, here are the parks that we have that submitted their surveys in late, with the first one being Casa de Amigos Mobile Home Park, who submitted on October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. The second being Mobile Park West Mobile Home Parks, who submitted on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-five. Third being Lake Bernardo Mobile Home Parks, who submitted February twelfth, twenty twenty-five. And then Imperial Mobile Home Estates, who submitted February thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, or, sorry, twenty twenty-five. So next, we'll take a look at survey extensions. Extensions are provided to parks upon request so long as a request is sent prior to the deadline itself. Two parks, Casa de Amigo and Imperial Mobile Home Park Estates, reached out asking for extensions, and both were approved and given one extra week to send in their surveys. Both parks turned their surveys but passed the approved extension deadline. So now taking a look at the previous year's surveys. So like we mentioned, at a previous rent review board meeting, it was brought forward that the average rent by park reports for the years twenty-one through twenty-three were missing from the city's website. We researched and found that we had the majority of these reports, they just weren't consolidated or provided to the, on, on the city's website itself. But now, all, all average rent by park reports have since been posted and are available for the public to view, like I mentioned, on the city's website. And then the report for twenty twenty-four will be available in early twenty twenty-five, once we have all information verified and confirmed to be posted. So now taking a look at the consequences for failing to report. So included in the city's fee schedule is a forty-dollar mobile home park administration fee. This fee will only be charged when a park does not submit their annual survey at all, or if they submit an incomplete survey. Outstanding surveys will be charged at a rate of forty dollars per space, which includes all rent control spaces, long-term spaces, and vacant spaces as well. Incomplete surveys will be charged forty dollars per omitted space, space information. An additional consequence, though, for failing to report is that if a park turns in a rent increase application and has any missing surveys between the submission of that increased application and the last approved increase, we will not deem that application complete until all missing surveys have been submitted and received by city staff. So now we can take a look at the potential cost of failure for parks submitting the survey. So as mentioned previously, each park is charged a forty dollars, forty dollar fee per space for information that's missing or surveys in general that are missing themselves. So because staff, though, cannot be certain about the level of communication between parks and, parks and city staff previously, this policy, previously ordered policy and resulting fees, staff does not plan on retroactively charging the delinquent parks for the years twenty twenty-one or twenty twenty-three. As mentioned previously, for twenty twenty-four, there were four parks that neglected to submit their surveys by the October fifteenth deadline. Imperial, Casa de Amigos, Lake Bernardo, and Mobile Park West. At the time of the staff report, for, at the time the staff report was submitted for this item, these parks had not submitted their surveys and would be billed the amounts that you see here. Since then, though, all parks have received their, all parks have submitted their surveys, and we do not intend, intend on charging the administrative fee, which totaled roughly thirty-four thousand dollars. In conclusion, by enforcing these measures, the city promotes adherence to regulations, reinforces accountability, and ensures fairness in mobile home park operations. Looking ahead, the city aims to focus on improving communication and adherence to submission deadlines while maintaining affordability goals. Noncompliance results in financial liabilities for parks and impacts of data integrity used for all, used for rent control oversight in the city of Escondido. used for all, used for rent control oversight in the city of Escondido. And that concludes the presentation for the annual surveys. Any questions?
I just would like to add that the waiver of the fees, because this was agendized as an update, we'll have to bring that back to you as a, as an item that you can vote on. So that will be coming in the next several weeks. So tonight will be just an update and then, like I said, you'll see another item in the near future to actually propose waiving the fees.
And the reason we're proposing waiving the fees is because of the lack, we can't tell the level of communication between, before these new staff folks came on board. So they're doing corrective action. There is, there is question about the level of communication prior to that. The intention moving forward, now that we have the communication under control and we know this, would not be to be waiving fees in the future. If somebody is late because they're impacting it, we will not be waiving fees. That would be the reason we're waiving fees now, is because of the level of, that's our recommendation in the future.
I just want to make sure I understand you correctly. The recommendation as of now is to impose no fees for any of them.
Because of the level of communication, when we, when we identified this, this required a change of internal processes so that we're on top of it. And because we had challenges understanding what the level of communication was between past staff and, and the parks, it doesn't seem appropriate to challenge, to do that fee where we don't know what we were saying or not saying.
Okay.
Yeah.
But moving, but now that we have a confirmed process in place, there's no reason to not be charging fees. But that's a conversation for a different day, but I just want to make it clarity that that's why that recommendation will be coming back to town.
Understood. Okay, let's go on to public comments.
Yes, Louise Reed.
Oh, hi. I'd like to stand up if I may because
Yeah, of course.
I can't see you guys, I'm sitting down. My name is Louise Reed. I'm vice president of MPAK, which is the Escondido Mobile Home Positive Action Commu-, uh, Positive Action Committee. Many, thank you so much. I haven't had supper yet. And as MPAK, we've been around since nineteen eighty-six, believe it or not. And most people have never heard of us. We like to, although we send out a one thousand nine hundred and fifty newsletters to the mobile home community. So everybody that is on a rent control, except unfortunately, we don't, none of us speak Spanish and we don't get to the Spanish people. But we do deliver to seventeen different parks. We also send them to the city council, we send them to you mayor. And so, when I first heard of this meeting, I thought, oh, golly, I'm going to go up and, I'm going to stamp my feet, of course, lightly. But I wanted to, because there were so many things that were going on that were so frustrating. Back in twenty twenty, Ingrid Rading, myself and Joan DeBries had many, many meetings with park owners and with the city attorney and regarding twenty twenty dash R four. We needed to do something because the park owners were just literally killing us. I mean, they were not paying any attention, they were doing basically whatever they wanted. They were not offering rent control, they were only offering leases. And if you said, well, what about rent control, they'd go, oh, oh, yeah, you can have a rent control, but we're going to raise your rent a hundred dollars. In fact, it happened to me in two thousand and five. And by the way, I want to tell you, I adopted Escondido as my hometown because I've been here twenty years and I absolutely love Escondido. It has so much to offer and I know that it could even get better. And I'm only done, oh my God, fifty-one minutes, fifty-one seconds. So I'm happy to say that the staff report is giving us almost literally everything that we've been wishing for and longing, because it was so frustrating not to get anything when it was in the, the resolution that had been passed in twenty twenty. And we'd call and everybody says, oh, we haven't got them yet. And I'd go, oh my God, what can we do to change that? And apparently, money talks, because if they're going to get, uh, uh, dinged for money, they're going to give what the city has asked for. And so, I do thank you for that very, very much, Daniel, Danielle and Carlos. Thank you so much, because it's been a long, it's been a long five years. And I'm anxious to see the new what state out. So, thank you so much for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're done.
No more questions here.
Yes.
Any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, the, the folks that were late and got the extension, is there anyone that's still late?
Well, the four were, they were all late, but we've received every, we've received everything.
Okay, so everyone, we, others, and then, so I'm glad that you do two months in advance, August, and then October gives the deadline, so you give them almost two months to get their stuff together. So the deadline is mid-October. When, when do we, when do we, when would the annual update take place then if we start to like follow, you know, going forward?
That is the correct timeline.
Okay, so then, it would come back to us when, though?
Oh, for you all, okay. Well, if they're, if they're due in October fifteenth, then we're going to be firm in our date. So yeah, well, I would think before that, depending on how the holiday falls, but January at the latest, yeah.
Good, okay.
January.
Okay.
Oct, when you talk October, knowing how the end is.
Yeah, well, that's what it's due and then you gotta work on it, right, and package it. So probably January, just so you know kind of when to kind of expect it. And then, just for what's coming forward, and I don't want to get too much on you because if we're not talking about that yet, we're just getting an update. There, that is, that is because there's been like a lot of transition in that department and then we're just making work going forward. There's processes and we're going to follow, right?
Yes.
Well, thank you for that. This is very important to mobile home residents that have reached out to me. And so, I'm happy that they, one of those who spoke today feels heard. And I think it's just good to have that transparency and accountability going forward. And yes, we've had a lot of transitions, so I can understand why we're doing that. So I look forward to voting on that item in the future when it comes to us.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, but they were answered that all four of those parks have turned in their, their applications, so I'm, I'm happy about that. I do look, well.
Including yours.
I look forward, yeah. I look forward to this coming before council for a vote. I won't be able to vote, I'll have to recuse myself because one of the, the park that I live in is, is on the list, so I'll have to recuse myself. In regard to the impact, I read the newsletter because I get it at home, but I've never seen it here for us as council members. So maybe the mayor gets it, but I would say, you know, make sure that we get it because I, I haven't seen it.
Yeah, we will, absolutely, yeah.
Okay, and I
The guy that sends them out will, yeah.
Okay, just
We'll make sure you get one.
Yes, please. I mean, I do it at home.
We'll have one this month, but we'll have one next month.
Beautiful, thank you. I really appreciate that.
Every other month this year.
In a long, non-election year, we, we meet every other month and there's a newsletter every other month. But during election year and the election year, there's a newsletter every month.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we were all aware of that information when that, that comes out. But other than that, thank you for the report. I'm glad that we are getting everyone on board, online, and the information available for it needs to be available. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, thank you, staff. We'll move on to future agenda.
All right, I have an item that I would like to put on, I would, I'm very excited to put on the agenda.
Second.
Thank you very much. I, and I won't take time because we, because it's getting late. I have been working with a number of cities for potential bringing back to be friend cities with us. So I'd like to put that on the agenda for a future date where we can have that discussion and hopefully accept, accept that and move forward and get some, I think, some really, really great, great work together, I'll be able to do. So that's my, my, my request to put on the agenda.
Awesome. And I need to hear, what was the
Friendship City.
Friendship City.
I have, I have currently about three cities, two that are, have, that are doing very well and one that I'm still working with to kind of see where they're at. And I think it's time that we begin to have a discussion, all of us, regarding this.
All right, council member, subcommittee reports and other reports, I'll go through mine real quick and then we just go down this road and down that road. And I'll make it quick. Last week, I want to thank Police and Fire Headquarters for providing a couple of young men and myself a tour this past week. It was, it was actually a really fun experience to get to hang out with all of them. I appreciate the volunteers who helped us to get that together. Now, over the weekend, I attended the Celebration of Life for Lorraine Boyce, the first female mayor of the city of Escondido. And last week, I was actually scheduled to offer a certificate of recognition for a woman who was supposed to have turned a hundred and forty years old. But unfortunately, she passed away shortly after the certificate was printed. So I presented the certificate to her family at the Celebration of Life, which was kind of an awesome experience. She, she worked at the elementary school that I went to here in Escondido, Light and Light, so long time connection, didn't even know it. La Vescot Day was a huge success. I took a tour with the Creek Conservancy, spoke at a Rotary Club and, oh, yesterday. So there's a woman in town named Christina, I think it's Sheer. She is a professional, world-renowned photographer and most recently had the BBC here in Escondido to photograph the greaves, which is a bird that nests and, uh, they're, they're found at Lake Wolford. So she took me out on a boat, we got up close and personal with those. It was actually a really cool experience. I would highly recommend any of you go with her and do that, it's pretty cool. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. La Vescot Day was great, a lot of, a lot of people there, a lot of great attendance. I did a tour with Edco. If you haven't done that, it's really amazing. You guys, I mean, most people don't even know where it's at. They do such a good job. I took my, my son and he was just fascinating, about moving parts and everything. But I don't recommend doing that. Got on the Cal Cities Call, I know my colleagues were on that, but I chimed in. Thank you guys so much for, for getting on that and for your guys' insight. Have a CEA meeting with Energy Alliance, if that's going to be coming up. Had one last, last month. Nothing really to report, budgeting looks good, things are looking optimistic, are positive. And I'll give you guys an update after the next one. Other than that, as always, thank you for, to my community for the privilege of serving.
Yeah, I also was participating in La Vescot Day and I got to nominate an award for one of the local heroes and also had my community clean up at the Chamber of Commerce last, I think, a week or two ago, which was very great. We had a lot of folk, we had over like twenty people, so we covered like the entire, both sides of the whole neighborhood. I also attended the Celebration of Life for Lorraine Boyce. She's also was a co-founder of the Escondido Child Development Center. I attended my last air pollution, San Diego County Air Pollution Control District meeting. My term ends in March and I'm, so I'm currently representing District Three because we used to be part of District Three, Escondido was, but now we're District Five. So there'll probably be someone else in that seat. And there at that meeting, we appointed a chair, vice chair and a military liaison. I met, so you said Miller spoke about the January month against human trafficking. That is not an issue that I have engaged with very much, but I did participate in that event. It was a great event and I met someone from the San Diego Organizing Project there and I was invited to a meeting with their members. And so I attended that meeting last night and I got to hear testimony from people who have been trafficked. And this is an issue that they're working on through the San Diego Organizing Project and they want to work with elected officials to actually like tackle this issue. So it was very interesting and I've already kind of had some homework of things that I'm going to like look into, have researched and really want to support the fight against human trafficking because North County is, you know, has large numbers of folks. And then, with that incident with that little girl, you know, almost being kidnapped at high year school, it's something that is, is now coming top of mind to me and I appreciate that they reached out. So very interested in that. I attended lots of arts events, which I won't say all of them, but also attended League of Cities. And I also attended the quarterly meeting of the Alliance for Regional Solutions. They meet quarterly on different topics, it's service providers and nonprofits. And that topic was talking about immigration with the new executive orders and how that's impacted the community and sharing kind of resources. So I attended that. And then, lastly, save the date for Edo Fed. It's Earth Day Escondido at Washington Park.
What was that?
Earth Day Escondido at Washington Park.
That's always fun.
Save the date. And if you have, yeah, if anyone has suggestions or organizations that want to participate, let me know.
My next, all right. We had a Tisitosa this week, the largest folklore dance event in Southern California. We had close to nine hundred, just a few missed it from nine hundred dancers for the weekend. Together with that, there was a delegation from Oaxaca, it came, two mayors, a number of council members and other officials that I had the opportunity to be able to host, give them a tour here in the city. We are very thankful. Francisco Varagas stepped in and made a presentation in this very room for, for them in Spanish and that was just fantastic. They left very happy and there's some relationships there that I'll be talking about, friend cities. So that is, that's some serious good, good vibes, connections and I think it'll be, it'll be something great for our city. La Vescot, I attended also. I had an opportunity to install officers at one of our clubs here in Escondido on Monday. Tomorrow, I have an NCTD board meeting. On Friday, I have the NCTD thirtieth anniversary and we'll be doing ribbon cutting for a couple of new Sprinter cars, which for those of us that have experienced them breaking down on a regular basis, are excited that we'll be able to hopefully begin to see that diminish. I also was on the call for League of Cities, the San Diego region and, you know, we have a lot more work to do. Thank you.
All right, well, last week was my first meeting at the San Diego County Air Pollution Control. So I was really happy to have a consultant there with me to kind of help guide me. But what I was really impressed about was just how involved they are with what's going on in, um, with San Diego. Yeah, yeah.
They want to revolve.
Even though it's a, it's the sewage thing, yeah, just to see how they're really stepping up and, and helping out with that. So I'm really excited about learning more. I also have, I chair, I'm the chair of the Human Trafficking Committee in the Rotary District here. So we, we did connect. Yeah, we're going to have a couple of meetings, a meeting coming up in two weeks if you'd like to be a part of that. Paco, Pablo, we had talked about the artists. So Jennifer Shonik announced or is connecting him to where there is some grant money for him to be able to work with the youth here in Escondido. So that's a really good thing, they're going to be bringing it up in a while. Young Professionals, I attended the Young Professionals and group with the Chamber of Commerce when I, I started that one when I was young. So I just go because they need adult supervision, but, but it was really good. It's grown, it's networking and they're excited about what the city plans to do with, you know, just streamlining the process. So that was a really good thing. And then also Circus Vargas is here, everybody grab a kit or just go and be a kid for the weekend.
Go in on Sunday.
Yeah, and that is it.